You're on the record.
All right, good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, April 14th, and the time is 9:00 in the morning, and the Board of County Commissioners is in session for our open business meeting. We have all three commissioners with us. I'm in the office here, and we have Commissioner LaCiando remotely, as well as Patrick Malloy is with us remotely, also in the room with us. And I'm going to start with Phil, and then we'll move around the room and then to the folks that are on remote with us.
Phil McGreen, clerk.
Brad Smith with the assessor's office.
Paul Perkins here, county prosecutor.
Jeff Maugh, treasurer.
Jason Bolville in services.
Okay, and Bob McQuade, Mr. McQuade?
Bob McQuade, assessor.
Okay, great, and then we'll move to Cassie.
Cassie Porter, HR.
And then we have one other person on. Who else is on?
Judy Martin, you've got everybody, Judy.
Oh, it's Judy, okay. Judy, no, I already said Patrick, yeah. Okay, good, all right, let's get going then. I believe there's some changes to the agenda. Commissioner LaCiando?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm going to move to amend the agenda to remove agreement number 13766 from the agenda.
Okay, we have motion to remove 13766, and this is...
Nope. The regents agreement.
Yep, this is the blue, this is the regents agreement, advice letter 202000577, and this is...
I would second that.
Okay, great, Patrick. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments during none? All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. All right, we're going to take up new business now. I'm going to open the public hearing on resolution number 2507. It's a resolution to sell Barbara Dam and associated property at a private sale. Is there anyone here wishing to provide testimony? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll open it up for discussion amongst the board members. All right, any questions about this one, Patrick? I know you've been reading up on it.
Madam Chair, my concern on this is the problem with the county liquidating public property, you know, funded by the taxpayers. My concern is that, given that this auction took place on March 30th, and on March, was it 24th or 25th, the governor issued a stay-at-home order, I don't know that it's any surprise that no one showed up to a public auction. I'm just concerned that, in the strictest sense of the law, this does not meet that requirement. And certainly, in the spirit of the law, I don't know that it met the standard of a failed public auction. I would hope that we might be able to push this back and rerun this when there is not a stay-at-home order in place.
Okay, any comments, Commissioner LaCiando?
Well, that's certainly something that we weighed. We did have two potential bidders who went ahead and put up $100,000 securities in order to be able to bid. Based on everything we know at this point, they were planning on showing up that morning, but it sounds like there was maybe some conversation between the bidders about not bidding. So, I don't know that we actually would get any different response if we were to go ahead and do this all over again.
And just for the public record, we did hold the auction outside, and people were safely distanced six feet away. So, we met all the requirements under the shelter-at-home that the governor had put forth. And so, I feel that legally, we've met all these requirements. I would be amenable, though, to go ahead and table it. So, Patrick, if you have concerns, you can meet with our legal team. You can meet with Lorna, who's been the attorney on this project, and she can maybe walk you through all the steps that we've taken over the course of the last probably 12 months, and bring you up to speed, and then we could table this for possibly next Tuesday. Is that okay?
I would be fine with table it until next Tuesday. I think that would answer some additional questions I may have.
Okay, yep, that sounds good to me. You want to go ahead and make that motion, then, Patrick?
Yes, Madam Chair, I will make the motion to table resolution number 2507 until next Tuesday, which is March, sorry, April 21st.
I will second that.
Okay, we'll table that for the OBM meeting on the 21st. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Thank you. Next step, licenses. And Diana, you want to go ahead and make the motion on the licenses?
Yes, Madam Chair, I need to approve and ratify the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one new license, 43 license renewals, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
And I will second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Diana, we can't hear you.
Aye.
Okay, I think she said aye. Guys have it, motion carries. And what I'm doing, Patrick, since we're trying to all do this through WebEx, it's a little clunky if I just wait and people sort of talk over each other. So, I'm just sort of alternating who makes the motion, so it goes, it's a little bit more expeditious, okay?
No problem.
Okay, great, all right. So, next step, I'll need a motion for the clerk's office. Patrick, would you like to make that motion?
I'm just sorry, I'm getting to my area. There was no motion for the clerk's office.
Oh, that's right, there's no motion for the clerk's office. Thank you, Patrick. All right, comments?
We don't have something agendaized today to wait for the clerk's office, just an update.
Yeah, you have the quarterly expenditure and revenue report.
Oh, sure.
You want to walk us through that?
Well, actually, the expenditure report...
What's that, Diana?
Can you have Phil get closer to the microphone, please?
Oh, can you get closer? Yeah.
I can't. Sorry, we're a little out of sync in our office on all of this. So, first, I'll give you an update. In terms of what we've got going on in the office, the first absentee ballots went out yesterday. That was about a week delayed compared to what we normally would expect, and that's just due to the volume and all the changes. We had to change, had to reprint all of the return envelopes so that we could have the paid postage, as well as the proper dates on all the materials for those. So, we mailed out just over 12,000 absentee ballots yesterday. We have another, one I'm told, is we have another 16,000 requests in the queue. Just to put that into perspective, we only mailed, we mailed just under 4,000 absentees four years ago at this time. So, in our first mailing, we're three times what we had four years ago. And based on the request volume we have right now, we're just shy of the total vote count from four years ago, anticipating many more requests to come in. Based on, many of you probably received a mailer from the Secretary of State's office in the past, you know, either yesterday or on Saturday. We were seeing about 15 to 20 requests come in per minute yesterday.
Once you got that mailer, yeah.
Yeah, and so, the volume, we're all hands on deck, out at elections, trying to process the volume. Here after this meeting, I have a meeting with the Secretary of State's office, just trying to figure out other technological tools we can do to expedite some of this, to get the mail out. Our mailing operation is doing great. It's the processing the requests to get them mailed. Once we get them to the mailhouse, we're golden. But it's certainly unprecedented in the nature of an election, and we're doing all we can also to help support candidates with information because this process is so unique, this election. So, I'm sure there will be many more updates as the election goes on. But if you guys hear things or have questions about the election, please don't hesitate to direct them my way. That is where a lot of my time is, especially with the volume of everything that we're handling right now, just trying to handle that. Also, just given the timing, I'm sure Cassie's in this boat as well. Budgets, we're right where personnel budgets are due, so there's a lot of attention by county offices and departments working on their budgets, and we're just working with everybody to get those in. The final submissions aren't until next month, but personnel stuff is due right now. And so, just a heightened attention to budgets at the moment. But we're working through that, just fielding questions. And at least on my end, I don't know about Cassie's, but it's gotten pretty smooth so far, just working with people on the budget-related stuff. So, we're continuing to do that. The, I guess particularly for Commissioner Malloy, you guys received the information on the quarterly revenue and expense report. This is just a quarterly report to kind of show you how we're doing in terms of budgets. Because of the timing of this, right, this doesn't really show us any of the impacts that we're going to see as a result of COVID-19. This is looking at the prior quarter. On this, you know, we often have had special meetings for this, so this is the first time, ironically, now that we're doing everything remotely, where we're just trying to add it to the open business meeting to give you that update because there's questions. You can see on the right-hand column where people are as a percentage. Nothing stands out to our office as concerning at this point, even though you'll see some instances where revenue is significantly down. Those are things like the fairgrounds, where most of the revenue comes in the summer, parks, where revenue comes in the summer. And then you see plenty of instances where most of the revenue has already come in, I mean, even include a few instances where revenue is underbudgeted compared to what they've received. Where, at this point, we're halfway through the fiscal year, so if you're kind of looking at a metric to hold, you know, things should be at the 50% point if they flow evenly, both on those expenses and revenues. But again, as I mentioned, we've gone through it. Nothing is particularly stands out. I mean, but you have the information, so you can go through and see. But there's no reason to chase down anything with any departments at this point. I'm sure this report will be more enlightening or intriguing the next time around when we give it, because we will be watching. I mean, Bob McQuade has mentioned previously things like motor vehicle, driver's license, places that are closed obviously aren't bringing in the same revenue, and so, we'll be watching for that and being able to share with everyone where we are. But so far, what we're hearing anecdotally, too, from departments is, you know, we, and things are going okay in a sense. I mean, I think there's some clunkiness, like development services. I mean, they can talk about it. But so far, the development community is still trucking. If anything, there's pressure to do more, not a concern of it not happening. And so, same thing we're seeing with recording revenue. That hasn't actually slowed down like we anticipated. So, if there's any questions specific about it, I can answer them, but you guys have the information. And like I said, everything's in a good, in good order for where we should be at this time of year.
Yes, just one line item that I have a question on, and it may not be anything, is the public health line item. That's 65% of expenses, which is a little bit high for halfway through.
Public health is, that's just a distribution. That's someone goes to the public health district, so that just has to do with the timing of the payment. That doesn't, has any, has no reflective, we budget a certain amount based on what they request, and we pay them that amount. So, it's a timing thing, not anything else.
Questions, commissioners?
I'm just wondering if we can bump up the next report to, say, a month from now? Typically, we do this quarterly. I'd like to kind of keep a pulse on it a little bit quicker than that. Is that something we could look at, Phil?
Yeah, no problem. We do it monthly in our office, so we just have a statutory obligation to do it quarterly.
Okay.
So, we'll meet that, but yeah, we get a report every month. So, next time we have a monthly report, I'm happy to share it.
Great. Commissioner Malloy, anything, any questions on the report?
No, I took a great deal of time looking through it, and it was all very self-explanatory.
Great. All right, thank you. Okay, anything else from the clerk's office? Go forth, and continue to do good work.
All right, thank you very much.
You guys are swamped over there, super busy. Okay, next up, claims journal. Commissioner Malloy, would you like to make a motion on the claims journal?
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the claims journal dated April 10, 2020.
Commissioner LaCiando, did you second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Commissioner LaCiando? Okay, she's stating aye. Guys have it, motion carries. Next up, Commissioner Malloy, do you want to go ahead and make a motion on the personnel action forms as well, please?
Sure. I move to approve the personnel action forms as listed on the agenda, including one, conditional pay increase, seven introductory period pay completions, six leave with pay, four miscellaneous, 16 promotions, four reconciliations, two salary increases, one step increase, sheriff's pay plan, and the summary sheet remain on, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
Okay, thank you, only a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
All right, we have an aye. We have an aye from Julian this morning. All right, aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, assessor's office. Do we have a report from the assessor's office? Good morning. Bring your chair on up, Brad.
Bring up my chair.
How are you?
Make sure Phil has the six feet. Morning, Madam Chair, commissioners. Just a quick update on the assessor's office. Exemptions are due tomorrow.
I cannot hear Brad. Can you move closer to the microphone, please?
He's right on top of it. I'll have him speak up.
Does that sound better, Bob?
I can hardly hear you, but go ahead.
I think it might be on your end because it's pretty loud hair, so.
Good, Diana, can you hear him? We can't hear you.
He sounds hollow. He may be amplified within the room, but I don't know that he's amplified on the stream.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and give it a shot.
Yeah, let's go ahead. But with exemptions due tomorrow, we're getting a lot of calls. Yesterday, we actually had 466 calls.
Oh, geez.
Typically, we have about 100 calls. So, lots of homeowners exemption and property tax reduction questions. We're able to, the admin staff is able to help a lot of people process stuff online, so it's been a big help. As far as the numbers on property tax reduction, we're at 3,343. Last year, we were about 3,500, but keep in mind that has the April 15th deadline last year, so people were rushing to get them in. So, we're still optimistic that we can make the 4,000, 4,400 to 5,000 applicants in total by June 15th. We're the exception. So, but overall, values are coming along. Everything's moving along pretty smoothly, and we're on track with everything, so.
Great, thank you. All right, Mr. McQuade, anything you'd like to add?
Madam Chair, there's nothing that I want to, that I really need to, there's time, other than the fact that we've got a role that's going to be closing in just about six weeks, and we're sending out assessment notices, and I'm very confident the way things are going at this point in time, but I can hardly wait to get back to the office. I really need to get in.
Okay, well, we miss you, too. All right, anything else from the assessor's office at this time?
That's everything.
Okay, thank you, all right. Let's move on then to treasurer's office. Good morning, Beth.
Good morning.
And you?
Madam Chair, commissioners.
Miss Maugh, Beth, and, you know, switch it back and forth. All right, what do we have from your office this morning?
Well, for the most part, things are going fairly smoothly. We're still depositing daily, we're balancing daily. So, really, nothing extraordinary on the tax collection or treasurer side. What has changed in our business is public administration. I think I mentioned last week that we had two new cases in one week. That was very unusual, perhaps a record, I wasn't sure. We've since received two more cases. So, I do know that four cases in two weeks is an extraordinary amount of work for our office.
Do you want to go ahead and explain to Commissioner Malloy what your public administration staff does for the public?
Yes, of course. Welcome, Commissioner. So, in our public administration function, we essentially serve as the public administrator of the estate. So, this is when someone dies within Ada County without an heir or a will. We work closely with legal and our prosecuting attorney to get appointed as public administrator, or in some cases, special administrator if we're concerned about waste or, you know, conflicting claims to assets. So, we get in there, we evaluate the status of the estate. We're looking for bank accounts, insurance policies, social security income, determining the value of those assets, liquidating the estate, and then allowing creditors to submit claims. So, in other words, the personal representative of the estate, but in the public capacity. So, again, four states that we're working at.
Function as a probate court.
Pardon?
Basically, function as a probate court.
Exactly, yes.
So, you have two more, go ahead. You have two more additional cases that just came on?
Two more additional cases, so we're working very closely with the coroner on these cases, so.
So, it's stretching your staff capacity?
We're okay, yeah, but it's...
Just one more thing.
Yeah, yeah, but that's the big update for our office right now.
Okay, great, all right. Any questions for Beth?
Beth, do you have what you need in terms of personal protective equipment for your staff?
We do, yes, thank you. And we have been working closely with the coroner. We've also reached out to the paramedics several weeks ago just to follow their protocols and learn some of the best practices. So, I believe we do, but if I have concerns, I will follow up again just to make sure before we're actually on site.
Super, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, next up, Commissioner LaCiando. I'll need a motion for approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Do you have a second? I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, I will need a motion on the, let me just do agreements. Yep, I'll need a motion on the agreements.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the, is it now six agreements, correct?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead, though, before you make that motion. I just noticed that we've got one that I had Bruce come in here for. I'm sorry, we'll come back to you in just a minute, Commissioner Malloy. So, Thompson Consulting Strategic Planning Services Agreement. So, this is an agreement that came across my desk yesterday, so I asked Bruce to come in and talk us through this agreement. It did not go out for RFP. The amount isn't a huge amount, it's 10,000. Oh, it did go up for RFP? How did we miss this?
I explained everything to Justin email, just relate that to you.
Okay, I didn't read it yet, so, yeah, that's fine. So, you're here, so kind of walk us through this. I think it's wonderful, I think it's great. Just want to make sure that you're on track, that this is aligned with the consulting company when they come in. When are they planning on coming in?
As soon as you approve the agreement. We followed all the protocols for legal and for procurement. We put out a statement of interest to three firms. We interviewed all three firms, and Sullivan Thompson is being best qualified to provide the services.
Okay.
And Thompson has done work for other county departments here in the past.
Oh, great, so they're familiar with the county? Okay, good. And so, you'll be, I'm assuming you'll be using our 2025 strategic plan and our master's facility plan as part of this?
This is just for our department to explain, well, first off, for us as a guide for, as a useful tool, a relevant strategic plan. Our department will be putting that on our website once completed. Our last one was, I'm embarrassed to even say, when we're doing our vision and mission statement, I went back to find our strategic plan to tie that into our mission and vision. Over a decade, the last...
Yeah, well, there you go.
So, it's time to dust that off. I found that out during that process.
Great, great, I really appreciate that. So, your management team will be involved in this process?
Correct. We have, I think, six people.
Great, so I'm not sure how I missed it because this is the type of thing that I am really a proponent for and really want folks to get organized around core values and mission and all of those things. So, I applaud you for doing this, and I apologize for not seeing it as it went through the process, not paying more attention. Didn't know how it slipped, yeah. Any questions, commissioners?
None for me?
I've been muting myself. No questions.
Okay, any commissioners, or any questions, Commissioner Malloy?
No questions for me.
Okay, great, all right. I'll go ahead now. Commissioner Malloy, if you want to go ahead and make the... I don't think there's anything else on the agreements. If we look through here, that any, is there anything else that anyone wants to talk about?
No, we've shut the one in question.
Yeah, we've got E is out now, so it'll just be A through G. All right, so with that, I'll go ahead, Commissioner Malloy, if you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the sixth agreement as listed on the amended agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, we got an aye from Julian, yes. The ayes have it, motion carries. We're going to have to swear him in or something. All right, next up, Commissioner Malloy, do you want to go ahead and make a motion for the indigent services?
Yes. I move to accept the recommendation of indigent services staff as listed on the summary of the case dated April 14, 2020, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, we can't hear him here, but I, attesting that they said aye, I can read lips at this point. The ayes have it, motion carries. And last but not least, we have impact fees, and we have Jason here from Development Services to walk us through the impact fees. Good morning, Jason.
Morning, Madam Chair, commissioners. So, back in December, the commissioners asked Development Services to start exploring impact fees and what it would take to adopt development impact fees for Ada County. If you recall, about that time, we had worked through the process of adopting fire impact fees for five of the fire districts. And so, in response to that, Development Services has been working on that project. We've developed a timeline. The first phase of that project was complete and resulted in a report, which we've talked about over the last, the last month. And I'm not sure, I've got, Luke, is it?
Can you report up?
I've got a couple tables, just a couple tables from the report that we, I can share, because he's bringing that up. So, Development Services went through and looked at what services Ada County provides that would be eligible for development impact fees, what the current level of service is for the development impact fees, as well as identifying a fee projection possibility. So, Table 2 from the report, so that shows the current level of service. So, if, for example, we wanted to start, we didn't have EMS, and we wanted to start an EMS, this is the cost to get where we are today for each, we would need to charge for each single-family resident or multifamily unit or commercial square foot to get to where we are today.
And just for the record, that's a one-time cost? That's not an annual cost?
Correct, that would be a one-time cost. This is also the fee that we would look to utilize moving forward for new development. So, each single-family home would be charged, if we move forward with development impact fees and adopted it. For example, EMS, each single-family home would be charged a one-time fee of 4237. And the development impact fees can only be used for capital, so things like buildings, land, and equipment that lasts longer than 10 years. And so, these were the five areas, six areas, I'm sorry, five areas, total. Five areas that, or five services that Ada County provides that would be eligible for development impact fees under Idaho State Code. Tables 10 and 11. Let me pop over here real quick. Tables 10 and 11 are examples of the projections. We did the projections, looking at what would be collected We did the projections looking at what would be collected if we just adopted it for unincorporated Ada County, and then if we were able to work with the cities and get agreements with the cities for what would be collected if those agreements were in place as well. Table 10 was for the coroner's office, and so over the next several years, you can see that if it was just, for example, if we were to adopt them, start collecting in 2021, $5,800 roughly, unincorporated Ada County, and $60,000 in, in Ada County and the cities. We also, we looked at several different growth projections, one on historic trend, and then one on the comprehensive plan. And so you can see that there is some, some variation in those projections, but this provides a rough idea of what could be expected if we were to move forward and adopt the impact fees, an impact fee ordinance. And, and Table 10 shows the jail impact fees as well, based on, here again, we have it based on just unincorporated Ada County as well as the Ada County and the cities combined. So Phase One of the report was to establish what could be, as I said, what could be, what services were eligible, and to provide a rough idea of what the projections would be. At the conclusion of Phase One, we wanted to get the board's approval to continue forward with this project. There was money allocated in the budget to hire a consultant, but we wanted to make sure we were on track before we moved forward with a consultant. And so that's why we are here today, as we have presented the Phase One report, and we want to get the board's blessing and approval to move forward with Phase Two and defining a scope of work, putting on RFP, and hiring a consultant to assist Development Services in the drafting of the several legal documents that are needed, the ordinance, capital improvement plan for each of those services, and an amendment to our, our comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Jason. So Jason, just for clarification, so the fees that you have listed here at the very, the very top, that just includes unincorporated Ada County, correct?
Madam Chair, so that would be the fee for whether it was inside. The only fee on here that's just unincorporated Ada County is the sheriff law enforcement. That's the only service that's provided just unincorporated Ada County. All the other services are provided to unincorporated Ada County and the county, and, and residences inside city limits. And so this fee reflects that amount.
And then you said that this is for new and existing homes, that fee?
No, so this, this would be just for new homes.
Just for new, because I thought you said existing.
So if we didn't have any of these services, and we wanted to start today to get the capital we have today, this is what we would have.
So this is growth paying for itself?
Correct.
Yeah, so you're not, yeah, I thought I heard you added an existing, and I'm like, wait a minute.
Nope.
It is all just new. Perfect. Okay, questions, Commissioners?
I want to reiterate what you, what you just asked, that this is not going to go on existing homes. Is that correct? These fees presented are not going on existing homes?
Commissioner Malloy, that is correct. So this development impact fees are only charged for new residences, single-family residences or multifamily or commercial square footage. It would not impact any, any existing residents, how, unless they were adding an additional residence on the property, then, then they would be required to pay this fee.
Unless they were adding what, excuse me?
An, an additional residence on the property. So if they were, if they were building a second home or an additional unit on the property, it would trigger these fees. But as far as existing, existing property, no. An existing residences, this would, this fee is not applicable to them.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Lacheyondo.
So obviously, this is not a normal way of doing business. I just want to make sure, given that we are open business meeting, that this report is available, so it will make it possible to the commissioner to look at it.
Did you understand what she said?
So Commissioner Lacheyondo, it was not attached to this specific agenda, it's been on several other agendas. We can post it on the Development Services website and make it available there, but it has been on, like I said, we've brought it before the board twice in the last month, and it has been on, attached to those agendas.
And. Go ahead.
Thanks. Just wanted to reiterate the comment that you made, Commissioner Kenyon, I think it's so critical for us to find as possible to have growth pay for itself. This will cover all of our capital needs, and it's a really piece of the puzzle for us.
Any further questions, discussion?
Madam Chair, I want to clarify too, that what we are doing here in this motion today would be to authorize a consultant, not necessarily ratify these expenses. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Are we ready to make a motion then?
Yes, ma'am. I move to authorize Development Services to proceed with hiring a consultant to help Ada County implement development impact fees as discussed here today.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, and Julian, was that you that said aye, for the record? I think so. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Must have said aye to something.
All right, thank you, Jason, so much for all your work on, on this. I know it's been additional task for your small staff over there, so I really appreciate the extra effort. And we'll walk through then the RFP process with you and get a consultant on, on board.
Look forward to it.
Okay. All right, anything else today? Any further discussion? It just keeps staying strange. Hopefully someday we'll come out of this soon. All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll go ahead and go into recess, and we'll be reconvening upstairs for legal at 10:00. All right, we're back on the record on Tuesday, April 14th, and the time is 9:37 a.m. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for our Emergency Medical Services District Meeting. We have Commissioner Lacheyondo with us. Commissioner Malloy, are you still with us?
I am.
Hey, Commissioner Malloy is with us as well. All right, we have no one else in the room with us, and is there any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
All right, hearing no changes, we'll move right into new business, and I'll need a motion for Claims Journal. Commissioner Lacheyondo.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated April 10th, 2020 regarding EMS expenditures.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next, I'll need a motion, Commissioner Malloy, for the approval of the minutes, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to approve the minutes and sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the ayes have it, motion carries. Any further discussion for EMS? Except go EMS. Great job, paramedics. All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll go ahead and we'll go into recess. Thank you.